See how fast you can do this. He won't be here, so if you want.
Okay.
It's okay, Mark. Some of the board members are not going to stay, so you may have to... You could get a back seat here shortly. Thank you.
I love that little coloring thing.
Oh, I think Dixon came up with the coloring sheet, so yeah, I need some reminding that we have a receipt.
So that, that seat's open.
It is fix three. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like to have a, the Clover Clippers 4-H Club members come forth and help lead us in a pledge. But last week was the, um, was Ohio 4-H Week. And 4-H is one of the largest youth organizations in the U.S. And this is some of our residents who represent Madison County 4-H, so they're going to lead us. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the precious stand of our nation under God. In this world, authority and justice for all. And if you'd like to stand up here real quick, I am going to present the 4-H Club members. Grace, Grace, you want to come back up here?
Grace.
Whereas the young people of Ohio and Madison County are one of our greatest resources. And whereas 4-H program has assisted in the growth and development of Ohio and Madison County for decades. And whereas adult volunteers and advisors are devoting their talent, leadership, and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas 4-H programs in Madison County help youth acquire knowledge and develop life skills such as leadership, self-esteem, citizenship. And whereas Ohio 4-H encourages young people and adults to become involved in educational programs offered by 4-H program in Madison County throughout the Ohio State University Extension and the OSU College of Food, Agricultural, and Environmental Sciences. And now there before it, therefore be it resolved that I, Jody Carney, Mayor of Plain City, do hereby proclaim that the Fourth Day of March, 2024, is a celebration of 4-H Week within the Village of Plain City. So I'm going to hand it to Mr. Hanson to present to the club at their next meeting. So thank you very much. You do not have to stay for, for the meeting, so thank you for coming.
Yeah, everybody that's affected by the sun's gonna go with that side.
Yes, if you would like to move over out of the sun. Although we are enjoying the sunshine today here. And Mr. Dryer, would you call? Here.
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 Mr. Terry Willby is running a few minutes behind schedule and Mr. Harriman is absent. Are there any additions or amendments to this evening's council agenda? If not, the council agenda stands as presented. Is there a motion to approve the council work session, um, meeting from minutes from March 6, 2024?
Motion to approve work session minutes?
Second.
Mr. Edel.
Yes.
Mr. Burrisson.
Yes.
Mr. Sims.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
And I apologize, I kind of got ahead of myself with the proclamation, but also wanted to free up some spaces here for, um, our, our guests in the audience as well, too. Um, we have some visitors on the agenda this evening. Um, our first one, I'd like to call forward is Mr. Steve Seifer.
For the record, Steve Seifer. So last Wednesday, myself and Andy made the effort to put up a demonstration for you. And, uh, we were actually asked to do it by several of you. Uh, I mentioned repeatedly that it would be Wednesday at 6:15. And all those who heard me but denied to my face saying not tonight, or I forgot, or you don't have permission, should be ashamed of yourselves. And for those who heard the demonstration, both from outside and inside, you clearly saw that any level we played over 75 decibels was completely unacceptable. Our music disrupted your pledge of allegiance, just like it disrupts this town. And I'm sure you were upset when we were playing for the mayor out there. But bless her heart, when she showed up, she was genuinely disappointed thinking that she missed our demonstration. And it burns me up that during your fake discussion that night, not one person mentioned what they heard. Only one or two people spoke. Every level we played that night over 75 was disruptive and disrespectful to everyone around as we were doing the demonstration. Your goal was to take out the subjective nature of the current noise ordinance. Here's a few statements from the current version, which clearly shows the heart and intent behind it. "No person shall generate noise for an unreasonable length of time which is plainly audible and likely to cause inconvenience or annoyance to a person." Plainly audible means any sound that can clearly be heard from 50 feet or more. You need not determine particular words or phrases reverberating rhythmic bass is sufficient. And so tonight, you're replacing the phrase plainly audible with a ridiculous level of 90 decibels. Anyone with common sense can see that you're more interested in protecting businesses instead of the residents you claim to serve. Any less, any level over 75 decibels is unacceptable for the residents of this town.
Thank you, Mr. Seifer. Mr. Andy Lit.
Thank you. My name's Andy Lit. Uh, as Steve said, last Wednesday, he and I put on a demonstration, uh, of the sound. And we believe that anything above 75 decibels is totally unacceptable for the residents of Plain City. We believe that you all heard that as well. Uh, Mayor, I wanted to say a couple of things. I believe you have a heart and that you care, and we really appreciated that when you showed up. When it came time for the discussion during the work session, you didn't say anything, and we don't know why. You have a voice, and it's an important voice. You're our elected mayor. You must be stronger. And you were all silent. I don't know, is it just being cowards? Or is there something else? Is there a corruption? It's hard to understand why you were silent when it came time for the discussion. The demo clearly showed that anything above 75 would be totally unacceptable. The chief, the chief let us, uh, borrow his meter so that we could do the demonstration with the meter that would be used. When it came time for the discussion, he asked that it be moved earlier in the agenda so that he could be present. He didn't say a word, but nobody asked him. Not one council person asked the chief of police, what was his perspective on this noise ordinance? What did he think about it? Why did he want it to be earlier? The demo proves that anything over 75 is unacceptable. At the last village council meeting, the village administrator who had written it set the number to 100. And I believe that was an intentional thing, so that it could be lowered to 90, which is exactly what you've done, and it's exactly what the granary wants. Not one person asked, where did 100 come from? You weren't curious to know where that came from? Are you just afraid of the granary? Or is there something else like corruption? I don't know. And to all of you, we've got two new members, only one here tonight, you must find your voice. We miss Frank Reed and Mr. Rucker because they cared. You all heard this demo, and anything over 75 is unacceptable for the residents of Plain City. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and this isn't always, during this discussion time, we don't always have to make rebuttals. But I do want to go on record and say that, um, when it was brought about up to those standing after the meeting asking about, you know, hearing this, the, the music and the, um, with the meter, and it sounded like a great idea, I wish myself would have said, you know, let's organize it with staff so that all of council members could make sure that the timing was there. So I'm going to put that on myself to say, next time, if someone from the public asks to do a demonstration, I'm going to have it organized with, with staff. So then that way, the communication was clear. I, I know I forgot about it, but, um, well, ma'am, I'm speaking, this is our meeting. I know you're frustrated, but we are working, we've had committees to work with the number. Where they have done the research, they brought it to council. So it may seem like we came up with the number, but, um, I do believe that they said it was, we can't come up with an arbitrary number. So we did have to take from other municipalities to put into, um, the legislation beforehand, that's before us. And then, I mean, we, we are working, we heard it, and we are also trying to, doesn't, what, if, if the legislation is passed and we see that it is not working, we can come back. But we have to start somewhere, and so that's what I want to say this evening. So, um, with that, we have Mr. Joe Kraft and if, as our next visitor. And if anybody doesn't have any reservations, we're going to waive the three minutes for Mr. Kraft. Um, I know he's been going back and forth on which meeting to attend, so want to see if there's any objections. Um, no objections, so the floor is, there is Mr. Kraft.
So, uh, I wanted to, uh, take some time and address, uh, council and, uh, the public and kind of like let them know what was going on at the drugstore. We closed because we had an emergency. We found someone to take our files so the patients would be taken care of. And as of Business Monday, February 5th, 2024, all files were transferred to the closest Walgreens. PBM Pharmacy Benefit Managers abuses, which there are many, put us out of business. The PBMs have abused us since I became an owner 25 years ago. However, around 2016, reimbursements started to go down even further, often paying us less than what we paid for drugs. This created serious financial challenges. Decreased reimbursements, along with the DIR clawback PBM scheme, made a tough situation impossible. The DIR clawback scheme involves an arbitrary system of paying pharmacies less than what the insurance companies say they'll pay them at the point of sale by taking money out of our checks. Last year, DIR clawbacks stole more than $544,000 from our four stores. This is an entirely impossible situation all independent pharmacies are in. We own four stores and we're having the same problem at each location. We weren't making enough to cover the cost of operations because the money was being stolen directly from our checks by the PBMs. We had plenty of business, but the business we had did not cover our cost to operate. We served 10,000 unique people in 2023. We filled 170,000 prescriptions. We employed 50 people, and we had $12 million in gross sales. It is not true that we were not supported locally or that the little guy cannot compete against giant corporations. Our people supported us, and we had more business last year than ever before. The problem is that this is not a level playing field. The PBMs dictate what we get pay, paid and steal from us. So we cannot succeed, no matter how busy we are. My line of credit was overextended, and my supplier wouldn't ship medicines to me if I couldn't pay them. We had an emergency. Our pharmacies are financially ruined by the greed of the PBMs. Our patients lost vital access to pharmacies in their communities. West Jefferson, Plain City, and Mechanicsburg locations, there are no other pharmacies. I'd like to thank everybody that's supported us over the last 25 years. This was my dream from pharmacy school and the life Robin and I created. We could not have done this without all of you. We're sorry that we could not save the stores. We know how much our patients need healthcare resources like those that we provided. I just wanted to see, I went ahead and included a statistic sheet that shows, um, what, how, how things, uh, were last year. We lost $331,000 across the four stores last year. Our delivery drivers were on the road 90 hours a week. We delivered 750 prescriptions a week, uh, across the four stores. Our expenses were below, uh, market averages. And, uh, like I said, we had $12 million in sales. That just seems, uh, so unfair to the communities we served that, um, you know, we're not going to be there for people, my 50 employees. It's, uh, very unfair to them. And, uh, just the incredible investment that all, uh, business owners have out there and independent pharmacies, uh, across the country. They're all in the same, uh, same situation. I've been an advocate, I've been to Washington DC eight times. I'm going for my ninth time, uh, in April. Uh, I go every year and meet with the senators and representative staff and themselves and, uh, tell them about, uh, ways that, uh, tell them about what our pharmacies are doing for the communities and how we can better partner with the government. Uh, because this DIR clawback scheme is part of the Medicare D, uh, program that the federal government's rolled out, and, uh, just wanted to let everybody know.
Thank you, Joe and, and Robin, and we very...
Jody got quoted by, uh, Channel 6 News, that was a good quote. She would not let them film her. They had the camera right in her face. She's like, Joe, please, please, I'll write a statement. And I'm like, Jody, it's so good you're, you're right there's the camera.
It was one of those moments where, um, my daughter was ill and my son and I were going in just to, to help see what we could do to help with the, um, to, to help you out in the drug, I said at the very end. And was not expecting the cameras there and was not prepared to go on camera. You can see us in some pictures in the back and, um, it's a very cold day. Uh, it's just very gloomy winter weather out. But I, uh, from the moment I heard, because I, I heard it from a friend and she just got in and said, you know, just lightheartedly said, well, it looks like you, are you guys going out of, or are you having a sale? Are you going out of business? And, and then that's like when it, that's, that's when I found out. I, I was shocked and tried to, try to let council know kind of just what I've heard before I had it confirmed, but it, but I know, but it...
It's confusing.
It is, yes. How many pharmacies in Ohio do you feel like have been affected?
Sure, so from 2015 until about 2020, the number of independent pharmacies in Ohio has decreased by 33%. And I think there's three counties in Ohio that don't have a pharmacy at all right now.
Joe, I'm, I worked with Cardinal Health, at Cardinal Health for a long time. I sound familiar with the medicine shop and the independent retail pharmacy group there. Were you with, um, they have a leader brand, so were you with?
Oh, yeah, so...
What was it, or?
Yeah, we, uh, I have been a Cardinal customer in the past, I was a leader store.
Yeah.
And, uh, they used to bring busloads of folks from Cardinal headquarters out because I was like the model store.
Yeah.
I had the signage and everything set up, and they would roll out pilot programs through, through our store that they were getting ready for the RBC show. But I'm a good neighborhood pharmacy. I, I was, and I was actually in a buying group with 2,000 other pharmacies. So as far as, you know, the people out there purchasing the most drugs, there's like, uh, CVS, Walgreens, then Rite Aid. Then there was our buying group was right behind Rite Aid for, you know, volume.
I was curious if you're tied in with them, what they're doing from a lobbying standpoint, it sounds really important.
Uh, uh, Mayor Source Bergen says they spent 8,000, $8 million last year on lobbying. I don't know, I did the math, that's like $300 for me, so I, I don't, you know, I don't know what more could be done. It's an incredibly complex situation.
I'm sure they have a lot of money doing that side of it.
Thirty-nine attorney generals have written a letter to Congress like, hey, do something to fix the situation. Mark Cuban's Cost Plus Pharmacy is exposing some of the wrongs out there where, you know, all of us have been paying, uh, excessive amounts for, for pharmacy. It's really complex because they've bundled even the village's insurance. The healthcare and the pharmacy are all bundled together. So the possibility like carving out the pharmacy benefit and making sure that you're getting what you're paying for is tricky. And then, just like in the financial services industry, those folks are getting paid based on which products you buy. So your insurance broker, hopefully they're not here tonight, but your insurance broker gets paid on what product they do. And when they sell your product that's most profitable for the, their clients, the insurance companies, the village pays more, and then they make more money selling you that product, so.
We are heartbroken for you and, and, and the community and, um, just offer our support. And, uh, when we're meeting with legislators, we'll definitely...
Bring it up, yeah, yeah, yeah. Again, I'm sorry.
No. Thank you. Um, that is our, that concludes our visitors portion of the meeting. Going into reports, um, last week, uh, did present the, uh, 4-H Week proclamation to the Madison County and Union County 4-H agents. So every county has a 4-H program, and we are fortunate to be able to work with both, um, of our extension agents. Also, did an Ag Day proclamation, um, with Union County Farm Bureau. And they were going around and presenting different, um, local agriculture product baskets. Um, they're specific to each, um, county. So this year, last year, I presented one for Madison County, and this year, um, presented to Union. And so working close with the Farm Bureau, um, they had Purple Plains Farm, and, um, I'm trying to think of the popcorn that they sell at the Avalon. That's the, trying to think of the brand of that, but, um, a little bit of that. But just always to, when talking and promoting by local, especially our local farmers. Because I know, along with the, um, pharmacy industry, that the agriculture industry is hurting on a national level as well, too. Attended the Regrand opening for Front Porch Home in, um, her new space. And it's, um, been greatly, uh, it was greatly attended with council members and staff and many members of the community. This, um, today I met with the Plain City Elementary Principal and Assistant Principal and Monroe Elementary, as long with Chief McKee, Sergeant Prather, Fire Marshal Adams, and Lieutenant, um, Hammond's. And about, talking about Safety Town. We are going to be, it's been a program that I have primarily helped to operate along with our, uh, first responders during the summer in the village for incoming kindergarteners. It's going to be moving to the school year calendar so that all kindergartners of Jonathan Alder School District can participate in the event and get the resources. So we're working with Union County Health Department and, as well as Madison County Health Department. And Monroe Elementary, if you're not familiar with that, for those attending in the audience, they're located in Plumwood, so it's the second location, second elementary, or the other elementary, excuse me, for Plain City, or for Jonathan Alder. And we did not have any of their students participate in it due to transportation and just access to the program. So we are going to be working with their staff and getting a program out there this spring for their kindergarteners so that they can experience, so. Also, I have, yeah, yeah.
Will you be, are you still leading the organization of that?
Yes, yes, myself and my Safety Pound, uh, Sa- Safety Town cohort, uh, Amy Dobler, we're kind of moving it through PTO a little bit with volunteers, but still working with, um, the first responders and Union County Health Department to help out the, the school, so. Hopefully, it's going to keep growing, but better than just 60 kids to participate in it. It'll have that, every child will get the resources. Coming up, I don't want to steal your funder in the Parks and Rec, but, um, we have the Easter egg. Come, coming up on, uh, March 23rd at noon. But, um, if you would like to donate candy, we have the, um, bins out in the foyer out there that you can donate. And also, um, stuffing the Easter eggs will be Tuesday, March 19th. And I've been kind of telling people three o'clock, but it's more like four o'clock, that they'll be set up and ready. So four to seven at the youth building at Passant Park. So if you would like to come and help stuff Easter eggs, we stuff about eight to 9,000 eggs, so it's a big event. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Lepton, our village administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. The Bigelow Avenue parking lot is moving along, curbs got in, uh, last year. Um, we're just getting conduit and a couple of other features. And then asphalt will be poured as soon as the plants reopen in April, uh, through May. Solar eclipse glasses are now available at our front desk. Um, it's limited to two per resident household. Um, and the coastside boxes are also available for, um, the kids. And then I have a couple of depot updates, but I'll wait till later in the evening to share.
Thank you, Ms. Lepton. Ms. Sonnet, our finance director. Thank you, and Chief McKee.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I would just like to thank the Public Works Department and also Ms. Lepton for their work, uh, on the police impound lot, where we're able to get a fence around it by using the old fence from where the depot's gone. Uh, it saves some money. But they, the Public Works did a good job. We completed several preliminary interviews for the open police officer position. We have a couple tomorrow morning to complete. And then hopefully we get invited from that to move on to the next pro- process. And then lastly, just a reminder that we have the council de-escalation training here next Monday night at six o'clock. Uh, again, those staff members need to be there. Uh, I think Paul is going to be there that night, right?
Yep.
In case we have some questions. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. In case we have some questions. Other than that, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief McKee. Okay, that brings us into our discussion items and we have the downtown revitalization district. And I am up with that. Mr. Stanford did give me some extra notes to make sure that I, everything that we have talked about is presented. He's at the school board meeting this evening. So this came to us, I would say, like to Ms. Lepton, myself, Mr. Stanford, Mr. Hutchinson, in a meeting, talking about different restaurants or businesses coming in, but the process to be able to get a liquor license in town. You either have to bring it with you from another location or one has to be vacated so that you can obtain it. Urbana and Bell Fountain has created, and many other municipalities have had the downtown revitalization district. That kind of helps to give so many licenses based on square miles. And I'm looking at Ms. Lepton to make sure, because I know.
I think it's, yeah, in population, maybe.
Yeah, in population. So that way you're not oversaturating an area with liquor license per per population or giving so many. But it also helps to, for businesses to be able to obtain wine and not have to put it on the ballot, which is costly to the village. For example, Mison Brero put their liquor license on the ballot during a special election and we had to front the cost on the, yes.
I have a question about that. Was that only for Sunday sales or was that, because I thought they trekked in a license.
I think it's for liquor.
Yeah.
Or the selling.
I think it was.
The one analysis for beer.
Beer and wine.
Can't sell like margaritas or anything like, anything like that right now. I think that's what it's.
So that was a little different, just because that was a change in the license. So that wasn't necessary.
It wasn't because they needed the wine. That's correct. Thank you for the clarification. But the downtown revitalization district would be something that is kind of along the lines of other municipalities that they're doing to kind of help with bringing in businesses.
Is it Urbana and who?
Uh, well, the ones that are close, Urbana and Bell Fountain.
I have a question about, so right now we do have several permits available. If you go online, it looks like there's quite a few. So what's the, I guess, difference between going with the revitalization district versus people just using this? Is it surely just the cost to the business owner?
Well, the city, I believe it's split in half. I know there's an east and a west side. So those may be available on the west side in what work the revitalization district will be for that east side that I believe we're at.
There are also two or three that are going to be on this ballot for town. So that accounts for a couple of those as well.
So when a Applebee's goes into Hilliard, they don't have a ballot initiative every time. How, this is a stepping stone, sure, but how do we make it so that we don't have to do this every time and have a ballot initiative in totality? Not just for revitalization district, but like, how do I just get rid of that?
Would that be a?
Well, it's it's based on population and then yours.
It's based on population.
It's ten miles of your of your town. So we're very limited in what we have already. I believe there's been a couple that's already been transferred in. That's a part of our group that we have now. So as we grow, that will help aid that. The new developments or new annexations that have a commercial district with it. So the the uptown revitalization district is going to be, it's basically, it's incorporates all B three, which is in the uptown district. Uh, it's roughly, I want to say thirty acres total, I think.
Sounds right, yeah.
I mean, so we're not talking about a huge area. So the revitalization district will open just for that specific district. So it'll only be within that thirty acres.
I think the question was, how do we get rid of the the voting for each time? Am I right?
Like, I I can't imagine Columbus and Hilliard to have a ballot initiative every time a Rooster's opens or BW three's opens. Like, I I I'm wondering, how do I get around that?
So are they, are they transferring their?
They're transferring them every time.
I have an order.
Really?
Yeah. Buying it out from someone.
So if someone treks his one and transfers one in, the we have to approve that, right?
We don't approve, we just don't do any action.
It'll come to council, it'll be read, it will be notified, but we typically there's.
We can take action. We have historically not taken action.
Is that same process exists if we get these additional seven through this revitalization district?
Uh, I don't know. If they're not just up for anybody to take and they can do what they want, they still have to prove that process of approval or not, or no action taken.
Yeah. I mean, seven, it's seven, right? That number based on population or?
So would that be in addition to the?
Ones that we already have.
That we already get, plus the two that are train, have been transferred in. So that would be a total of thirteen. Potentially.
And this is only for businesses that have fifty percent food service as well. So it's not just for.
So this can be just a bar or the Heson, the primary.
To support restaurants.
I think it's seventy-five percent.
Seventy-five percent, okay.
Seven feels like, it's a lot. Just see what would be down there.
I just think about the, the storefronts, like how many there are. And what I worry about is if the restaurant bar businesses overtake the spots. I mean, we just don't have like a lot of retail or a lot of like.
Thirteen storefronts, yeah, yeah.
And so to me, what what is our target audience and who are we trying to draw in? If we want to keep them in the uptown, like we need ice cream, coffee, things like that, not, to me, not necessarily more bars, bars, restaurants at this point. I don't, that could be the minority, but.
Are there other advantages to this uh district besides just liquor license? Is there other, is there other pieces to this?
What other, yeah, what other benefits come with this?
Yeah.
We have a, Justin, you want to, we have a printout kind of, since this is a brand new topic.
Yeah. By the name, it sounds like it's not just liquor.
This was, no, this was from Mr. Stanford, from the.
Okay.
Can I ask how long these have been around too? Like this program?
They've been around for years. I don't think they've been around many years, but uh, I'm trying to remember.
I mean, I have the list from Ohio, how many are. Is it true though too that the population has to be under a certain amount? That's why we don't see cities on this, like large cities?
I'm guessing that's right, because they probably already have a number that matches what they're looking for.
So I I guess for me, uh, I I don't necessarily, I don't necessarily have a certain issues with it. And frankly, I want to learn way more about this. This like, I, you know, the first I heard about this was in the packet. But all we're doing is setting up a public hearing. So saying that, I have no problem setting up a public hearing and having a discussion and everything like that. So um, I I wouldn't say I have an opinion right now and I am okay with having a public hearing and getting more. That'd be where I stand on it.
Which that motion will be.
Yeah, I I guess I'm saying, I I don't have, I don't have enough information to even ask that intelligent questions right now.
So what I'm hearing is that other benefits besides just the light and thing. So the pros and cons. Any other comments, questions, questions? Okay, moving on to the depot project.
Thanks, Mayor. I just wanted to provide a update regarding the depot park project. Overall, public reception has been very positive. So we look forward to continuing to move along. Because council did award the purchase agreement, we've closed on the actual building purchase. Um, like Chief said, we took down the the fence for the lot where it will go and the parking lot's shaping up. So it's kind of, I recommend going out there. It's a lot easier to visualize the open space. Um, and it feels a lot bigger than it did when the fence was up. So now we look forward to the actual moving of the the building, which has to happen in June per our contract. We have the contract with the movers underway. It's less than fifty thousand, so it doesn't have to come to council. But tonight I am requesting to waive the competitive bidding process for the actual deconstruction of the depot itself. This is just the deconstruction, the disconnection, the site clearing and everything for the building. Normally, we wouldn't like to waive the competitive bidding process, of course. But I did, it is allowed by the charter nine point oh two C. I did do kind of an informal bidding process where I contacted four different contractors. Since it is such specialty work, everybody that I talked to or explored the option just really couldn't do it, except one contractor that I am proposing to award tonight. Luckily, they are a local company. They're right across the street. It's Outdoor FX. They do excellent work. They've been very responsive. They have a person on their staff that restores historical buildings like as a side job. So he's got just an immense amount of experience on historical materials and processes. We look forward to, if it does get awarded tonight, to working with this local company, hopefully setting up a great partnership for the plaza project itself. So I just wanted to kind of explain that. We are on a very tight timeline. Like I said, we do have to move it by June. So even if we did competitive bidding, we're, we would really be cutting it close, especially with all the finer details. Outdoor FX has visited the depot three or four times now. So they're really confident and I'm confident in their work and that they're ready to get started if if the word goes for it tonight.
Any other questions on the depot project? Thank you, Ms. Lepton. We have a public hearing this evening. Public hearing is for PZ dash twenty-three dash eight, zero US forty-two, parcels number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine-point-zero-zero-zero, number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine dot zero-zero-one and parcel number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine dot zero-zero-two. Rezoning of one hundred and thirty-six point nine-five acres from Darby Township Agricultural District A one to planned unit development PUD applicant, Paragon Building Group LTD. I'd like to officially open this public hearing for anyone who is wishing to speak on this topic. The floor is yours if you'd like to come forward. And with that, I will close the public hearing for PZ dash twenty-three dash eight. All right, we have a series of motions. The first motion is to appoint Shane Hoffman to serve on the Plain City Area Development Corporation.
Will Shane be leaving the other committee then?
Yes, he will be resigning from Economic Development and Communications.
Motion to approve, to appoint Shane Hoffman to serve on the Plain City Area Development Corporation.
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes. Motion to appoint Shane Hoffman, passes five to zero. Motion to approve PZ dash twenty-four dash one, final plat for Marin Reserve SubArea A.
Motion to approve PZ twenty-four dash one, final plat for Marin Reserve SubArea A.
Second.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero. Motion to approve PZ dash twenty-four dash two, final plat for Marin Reserve SubArea B, Phase One B.
Motion to approve PZ twenty-four dash two, final plat for Marin Reserve SubArea B, Phase One B. Second.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Motion passed to approve PZ dash twenty-four dash two. Motion to approve PZ dash twenty-four dash three, final plat for Marin Reserve SubArea C, Phase One.
Motion to approve PZ dash twenty-four dash three. Second.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
PZ dash twenty-four dash three is approved. Motion to approve the correction to chapter eleven eighty-six dot zero-five F three A six of the uptown commercial overlay of the planning and zoning code.
Seven.
Second.
Didn't want to recreate.
Nope. Didn't want to mess it up and read it wrong.
Yes.
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 Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Motion for the correction to chapter eleven eighty-six, um, zero point zero five, it passes. Motion to set the public hearing regarding the creation of a downtown revitalization district for March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four.
Motion to approve the public hearing regarding the creation of the downtown revitalization district. Second. March twenty-fifth.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
It's passed five to zero to set the public hearing for March twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. Motion to waive the competitive bidding process pursuant to article nine point zero-two C of the Plain City Charter due to the best interest of the municipality for the depot project.
Motion to waive the competitive bidding process. Second.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Motion to waive the competitive bidding process, passes five to zero. Moving into unfinished business, second reading ordinance four dash twenty-two-four, amending the codified ordinances, chapter five oh nine dot zero-one-zero, excessive noise of part five of the general offenses code.
Motion to approve second reading ordinance oh four dash twenty-two-four.
Second.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ordinance four dash twenty-two-four passes five to nothing. Second reading ordinance seven dash twenty-two-four, amending the codified ordinances by the removal of chapter one eighty-five income tax of part one of the administrative code.
Motion to approve ordinance zero seven twenty-two-four.
Second.
Ms. Burke.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Motion passes on ordinance seven dash twenty-two-four, five to nothing. Second reading ordinance eight dash twenty-two-four, approving current replacement pages to the Plain City codified ordinances.
Motion to approve ordinance zero eight twenty-two-four.
Second.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Ms. Terry.
Yes.
Ms. D. D.
Yes.
Ms. Sins.
Yes.
Ms. Harrison.
Yes. Ordinance eight dash twenty-two-four passes. New business, first reading ordinance nine dash twenty-two-four, rezoning one hundred and thirty-six point nine-five acres at zero US forty-two, parcels number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine, number zero-two dash zero-zero-zero-two-nine point zero-zero-one and number zero-two point zero-zero-zero-two-nine point zero-zero-two from Darby Township Agricultural District A one to planned unit development PUD. First reading resolution twelve dash twenty-two-four, authorizing and directing. First reading resolution twelve dash twenty-two-four, authorizing and directing the village administrator to enter into a contract with Outdoor FX for services regarding the depot project.
Mayor, would it be possible to talk about waiving the second?
Second reading, yeah.
Motion to waive second reading resolution twelve twenty-two-four.
Second.
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Diller?
Yes.
Ms. Sins?
Yes.
Motion passes away the second reading.
Motion to approve resolution twelve twenty-two-four.
Second.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Ms. Diller?
Yes.
Ms. Sins?
Yes.
Ms. Marson?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Resolution twelve dash twenty-two-four passes five to nothing. First reading resolution thirteen dash twenty-two-four, adopting and implementing the rules of council. And we have two executive sessions this evening, Ms. Lupton, will we be coming back with any? We will not be coming back with any further business, so this will end our public portion of our meeting this evening. We are about to enter into executive session pursuant to Ohio law and rights code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G eight, to consider confidential information related to the notes negotiations with other political subdivisions. And our second executive session will be pursuant to Ohio law and rights code, section one twenty-one dot two-two G one, to consider the employment of a public employee. Is, who should stay in?
Ms. Dragan, Sonnet and you two.
Okay. Is there a motion to go into our first executive session?
So.
Second.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Sins?
Yes.
Ms. Mar?
Yes.
Ms. Dill?
Yes.
Ms. Terry?
Yes.
Five to nothing, thank you.